The opioid crisis has taken hold with no signs of letting up. Tri-state communities, a culture of abuse, overdoses at an all-time high. But what can be done to fight the ongoing epidemic? Tonight, we bring the tri-state area together to start the conversation. Now, from the St. Mary's Outreach Center in Huntington, West Virginia, here are Jennifer Adney and Patrick Simon.
People in the tri-state are dying at an alarming rate.
911 call centers are overloaded, emergency rooms are overcrowded, and first responders are just overwhelmed. Good evening and welcome to a special edition of 13 News at 7. I'm Jennifer Adney.
And I'm Patrick Simon. The conversation begins tonight. We're going to talk about a very important issue that in one way or another affects us all.
The tri-state is in the grips of a drug epidemic like none we've seen before. People are dying at an alarming rate. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, opioids, including prescription pills and heroin, killed more than 33,000 people in 2015 alone. And get this, almost as many people were killed in traffic accidents that very same year. Nearly half of all overdose deaths are involving prescription opioids. And just to give you an idea of the impact that this epidemic is having in our communities, take a look at the numbers. West Virginia, Ohio, and Kentucky all saw double-digit increases in drug-related overdose deaths in 2015. And based on the size of the population with the number of people dying, the mountain state leads the nation with 725 deaths. And experts believe that that number is even higher today.
For the next hour, our goal is to not just talk about the problem, but also initiate change. How do we turn all of this around?
To find, to help us to find ways to do just that, we've assembled a panel of experts for you this evening from all the fields that are forced to deal with the fallout of drug addiction. We want to welcome this evening Tammy Walls. She is a registered nurse, the clinical manager, and ER for St. Mary's. Thank you for being here this evening, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Beside Tammy is Brad Barnett. He is a licensed substance abuse therapist with Ohio Valley Physicians. Thank you for being here, Brad. And beside Brad is Tim White with Prestera. He is the regional prevention coordinator for that group. To my right is Sarah Murray. She is the nurse manager for the neonatal abstinence therapeutic unit for Cabell Huntington Hospital. She is also the co-founder of Lilly's Place. Beside Sarah is John Matthews. He is not only a West Virginia native, but he is also a filmmaker, and he just recently came out with Opioid Inc., which you will be able to see on public television in June. Thank you, John. And JD Gandy is with Celebrate Recovery out of Charleston with River Ridge Church there. Thank you for being with us this evening. We will also, of course, be talking with our audience this evening, and we'll be inviting you to ask questions. And John, I know that you talked to many people throughout the state when you're working on your documentary, and you even talked to some families who lost more than one family member to this epidemic.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I was talking to Pat earlier, and, you know, it just seems like, you know, just my Facebook news feed used to be happiness and just birthdays and celebrations, and just, it just became overran with deaths, overdose deaths, this person or that person, funerals. I did a documentary called Surviving Cliffside back in 2014, and since then, like, it was set in a trailer park that was infested with opioids. And since that time, three of the cast members have died from overdose death. And one of them was a five-year-old little girl who found her mother with a needle in her arm, 18-year-old mother. So it was, I mean, it was just like, you know, growing, growing problem. And then, you know, as I did the Opioid Inc. film, I just found so many horrible stories like that. And, you know, Jonathan Duncan, who I was, we were just talking about, who, you know, had two brothers and a mother who died from prescription drug overdose. I mean, when he was talking, I thought he was talking about the same brother, and then he's like, no, this was a second brother, and his mother as well. So, I mean, yeah, it was just one horror story after another.
And Tana, you have a very important and inspiring yet emotional story to tell about your son. Talk to us about that.
My son was very intelligent. He was outgoing, funny, but he got involved in drugs when he was probably about 18. And he tried, he tried to fight the battle, but we know that he lost it. But my family and I are determined to go out and try to help other people to succeed with their hopes and not lose it like he did.
Tana, thanks for sharing your story. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And Tim, this is something that you all work to do to actually help with prevention. And I know that's a theme that we're going to continue to talk about this evening as well.
I think it's important to understand that people don't wake up and decide today I'm going to be a heroin addict. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration did a national survey of young people across America. Over 70% of those kids in the survey said I can get tobacco, alcohol, and prescription pills at home. It doesn't mean that mom and dad are giving it to them, it means they have access to that. And what we find out is a lot of kids, 11, 12, 13, they start experimenting with different things. Some of them, it's a one-time thing and they're done. Others, then by 15, it's something else, and into their 20s. So the first line of education and defense is in our homes, talking to our kids. Kids listen to parents, so it's very, very important that we do that. Then we have to limit the access to our kids, to those negative items, to tobacco, alcohol, and prescription drugs. We have drug takebacks in all of our counties. It's very important that you have a proper way of disposing of any unwanted or unused medication that you have.
Next, a lifesaving tool in the fight against opioids, or is it actually enabling addicts to seek out their best high? Stay with us.
You are a hostage to it. You're, it takes complete control over any and everything that you've ever thought, lived, loved, anything.
A catastrophic crisis that has taken a hold of our tri-state area. And one of the ways that health experts are actually able to combat opioid overdoses is by using something called naloxone. And many of the people on our panel tonight will tell you that naloxone does save lives if administered in a timely manner. But naloxone can effectively reverse respiratory depression that's caused by overdosing on opioids or opiates. Area emergency medical agencies administered over 4,000 doses of naloxone just last year alone, prompting many to ask, is the reversal agent helping, or is it hindering the fight against drug addiction? We want to start with our panel now, and I want to start with you, Tammy. As the clinical manager for the emergency room at St. Mary's, what are you seeing now that naloxone has been introduced? Is it helping, or is it hindering?
It is helping because people are administered the drug in the community. Many times, you have to overdose several times and be revived before you actually come to help, to ask for help. They'll come to the emergency room with EMS, they may have given them naloxone, and we may have to administer more, depending on how much drug they've had. They, we may reverse the drug, they may leave. They may stay for treatment. It just depends on where they are, and at that point, you have to be prepared to recover. You have to want to recover. You have to be in a place that you can recover, that there's support systems. Huntington has some of the best support systems in the nation. So, but saying that, you have to understand that naloxone is not something that just makes the problem prolong, and you have to overdose, and it's giving them another time to overdose. What it allows them is another chance at life. And sometimes it could be seven or eight times, and that's someone's husband, someone's child, someone's wife, someone's grandmother, someone's aunt. Someone, that person is someone to someone else, and someone loves them. And we have to give them that chance medically to come to recovery.
And do they actually, when they, when you do see a patient and they do need naloxone, are they, is there an option for them to immediately get some sort of treatment to help with their addiction? Or how does that work in the emergency room?
We have several resources. We use Prestera a lot. We have peer counselors that will come and meet them. They will, if nothing else, leave them a card, because sometimes they're not ready for treatment at that point, that they have that contact. So when they are ready for treatment, they can get a hold of somebody 24/7. We have processes in place through our urgent care, when a bed opens up, that they are contacted through the many different services that are offered through the community, and they'll come for a medical clearance, and then they go straight to recovery. So the bed is available, and they can immediately move to recovery.
Let's over and check in with my co-anchor, Patrick. I know you've also been checking online. We have some questions coming in from there as well.
We do. We have a lot of social media presence, a lot of people asking questions. And one of the questions is for our panelists tonight from Jenny W. from Facebook. My question is why they give them free needles, a place to do the drug, and the medicine to bring them back if they overdose? I think it's just insane.
I could understand the community's thoughts on that. The needle exchange. The needle exchanges so they are not contacting other diseases such as hepatitis. Hepatitis is a huge outbreak with drug abusers. So if they have clean needles, that's one less disease that they can contract. HIV is another one that they're trying to combat with a clean needle exchange. Knowing that these people are, will only use clean needles will help prevent other issues that could cause reoccurring problems. Also, many times, we have to pull addicts out of cars at the emergency room. Sometimes if they have clean needles, there's not needles sitting around, or that patient does have hepatitis that could expose an emergency nurse to or EMS if they're at the scene trying to revive the patient.
And Brad, what are your thoughts on that? I know that you deal in substance abuse therapy.
Well, it's based on the last two things that you were talking about, like, I'm curious how anybody could look at naloxone and what it does, and how, how somebody could say that's a bad thing. I mean, it's one injection saves a life. Like, how, I don't understand how that could be viewed as a negative. And, and I'm sure a lot of people will say that, you know, needle exchanges or providing a place, a safe place to use is a bad thing. I think you've got to be realistic about a problem of this magnitude. People are going to abuse drugs. And sometimes it's about treatment, sometimes it's about true success, sometimes it's about harm reduction. You know, an approach of harm reduction gives someone the opportunity to keep experiencing these consequences so that they will hopefully be willing to implement the changes necessary to experience a meaningful recovery.
I want to hear thoughts on that, too, Tim.
We work directly with the Harm Reduction Program, both in Charleston and Huntington. I think it's important that people understand, people aren't walking in and handing in three needles and getting three needles and walking back out. We have recovery coaches, we have folks from the recovery community that are there that sit down and talk to these folks. We give them options for treatment. We have medical staff that take care of any open sores or wounds they might have. When we first started the needle exchange program, 33% of the people coming in said they were sharing needles. At our last needle exchange, the survey was down to less than eight. So when we look at harm reduction, these are needles that aren't being dropped in our alleys, aren't being dropped in our playgrounds, aren't being dropped in our streets. So we're protecting the community at large so someone's not stepping on it, reaching in a trash can, and getting pricked. So we're providing that service and that link from that individual who may have a drug addiction to Prestera, Recovery Point, Her Place, and other services. And we're having about 30 to 40% of these people that are taking that next step and seeking a treatment option.
Thank you, Tim. And Patrick, I know you also had another question.
This is from a member of our audience tonight to any member of the panel. With all the discussion across the country about legalizing marijuana, what is the view of the panel about it being a gateway drug? Is this trend toward legalization something we should be fighting?
JD, I know that you actually work with a lot of people through Celebrate Recovery. And what are your thoughts on that? Is that a gateway drug when you see people dealing with addiction?
Well, I think it can be, because a lot of people start using something because they have a pain inside. Maybe it's not a back pain, but maybe it's a hurt. Maybe they were abused as, as a child. Maybe they've suffered from depression, this, that, or the other. And so I think marijuana can be something that someone uses to dull the pain. And then, of course, there's a myriad of other things, and not just opioids, but gambling and alcohol. And that's why at Celebrate Recovery, we, we say that we are here for any hurt habit or hang-up, and that would include marijuana, and anything else that we would use to try to dull the pain or to numb the pain. But...
So you're saying anything can be an addiction if you don't actually treat the root cause of addiction?
Absolutely. Sex is a wonderful thing. It can be an addiction, though, and it can be abused, just like anything else. So that, that's why we find that with Jesus as our higher power, it's a 12-step group, but we find that we need more than just ourselves in order to deal with this pain. And we, as a group, and with our higher power, are able to get through that without having to go to some sort of drug, be it marijuana, opioids, or any other, any other substance abuse.
We'll come back and touch on that a bit more as well. But when we come back, we also want to talk about some of the tiniest victims. We touched on a little bit earlier. And as I was sharing stories this month in our States of Addiction reports, those were some of the very hardest for me to share. We've been talking about states of addiction, but we're also going to talk about the international news that is now being shared about our region. And we're also going to talk to, to one of our founders of Lilly's Place about what's being done to help our tiniest of victims. When we come back, stay with us.
The epidemic of addiction is not a West Virginia problem. It's a national problem. And I think that we just are tending to get a lot more of the attention right now.
The tiniest victims, the babies born addicted, as some people say, as the drug problem continues to tear apart families in our region, many babies are coming out of the womb already impacted by drugs, and it's called neonatal abstinence syndrome. Their tiny bodies are born just hours, days old, sometimes shaking with tremors as their bodies literally go through drug withdrawal. Right here in Huntington, hospitals like Cabell Huntington are seeing births of these types of victims at over 25 times the national average. But there is help, and there are a lot of people fighting for these young children. And I have had the opportunity to talk with and interview and work closely with one of those. I like to say you're, you're kind of one of their heroes, Sarah. You not only helped start the neonatal therapeutic unit at Cabell Huntington, but you're also a co-founder of Lilly's Place. Tell me a little bit about how this became such a passion for you.
Well, I've been a neonatal nurse for 27 years, and about six or seven years ago, we realized all of our critical care beds at the hospital were being taken by these babies who have special needs, but they're healthy. They're otherwise, they're term, they look like they're fine, but they're really not well. They didn't require intensive care beds, but they required special attention. So we talked to the hospital and decided on the day that 22 of our 36 beds were being filled by babies experiencing neonatal abstinence that we would open that unit. And we opened with 12 beds. Our average daily census is 18. We have eight babies at Lilly's Place today, and five babies waiting for a bed, and 24 in our unit today. So it's a problem that has only grown over the past five years we've been open. We thought that there are some babies that would function better in a quieter environment away from the hospital, and so we came up with the idea of Lilly's Place. And Lilly's Place is very much a community grassroots. It was nothing we did special. The community just came to the baby's rescue, and Lilly's Place opened. And we worked very closely between the hospital and Lilly's Place to provide the best environment we can for these babies.
This is something that's been in the national spotlight as well. We've been to your NTU several times interviewing you and some of the moms there. And one time we were there, you were opening People Magazine, because they had just recently done a story on Lilly's Place in the NTU. And the last time we were there, there was a photographer from National Geographic there. And one of the things, I think a lot of people, we hear 25 times the national average, but part of that is because of the testing that you all do at Cabell Huntington to make sure that babies aren't leaving with NAS.
We do. We test all mothers who come in to deliver, have a urine drug screen. And if the mom is positive, then we send the baby's umbilical cord to find out and confirm that, and find out what all the baby's been exposed to. And it's really important. We don't do it to be punitive to the mothers or to the families or anybody, but we want these babies to go home healthy, and we want them to go home safe. And experiencing withdrawal at home for a baby can be very devastating for the family, as a matter of fact. Bad things can happen. We want to educate the moms, give them the equipment, the tools they need that they can take care of their baby, because these babies can experience the effects of withdrawal for six months to a year after they go home. We get them through the acute withdrawal, and then we, you know, educate the mom so she knows what to do, or the caregiver, and it's not a bad time for them when they go home.
But your passion is helping so many people. And this is something that even online and on social media, as we've been sharing these stories, Patrick, a lot of people are concerned about these young victims.
Yeah, and then what happens, you know, after they return home after getting the treatment that they get? And this is from Patty B. on Facebook. And Patty says, "I'd like to know what's going to be done to help the upcoming generation of drug-affected children. We help the babies who go through withdrawal at birth, but it doesn't end there. All three of the grandchildren we're raising, all born addicted," she says, "all affected, are part of that generation. No one talks about the lasting effects of drug-alcohol exposure for all the NAS babies."
And are there, are there studies in place now? Are we looking at these children? I know the NTU's been open for five years. At five years, 10 years, 15 years down?
What we're seeing, of course, everyone knows the long-term effects of alcohol on the fetus because it's been studied for many years. It's very devastating. Drugs, opiates, we don't know a lot yet. There are studies going on, and studies have been done. What we've seen and what I've heard from the people that, birth to three, for one thing, that these children, a lot of them, especially, I have to mention marijuana. It's not just marijuana. And in kindergarten, they're, they show aggressive behavior. They don't function well in a group setting. So those are things that if there's plenty of education, that can be addressed behaviorally and not put them on ADD medicine when they don't need it. Most of it's behavioral things. But another thing is that everything a mother puts in her body when she's pregnant affects the fetus. Vitamins help, iron helps, good nutrition helps, and drugs hurt. And marijuana, I just have to say, marijuana has probably more lasting effects on the fetus than, than any of the other drugs. An environment plays a huge role.
Something just as small, as my mom gave me this expensive ring, and knowing that I'll always have that, and I'm not going to take it to go pawn, that, I mean, that's a really good feeling.
So far, we have tackled the growing concern over drug issues in our communities and the skyrocketing numbers of overdose deaths statewide. And some of the top experts say many of our country's top social problems are directly linked to drug abuse. When we talk about drug driving, violence, stress, even child abuse, oftentimes, they are linked back to someone in a family having some sort of addiction. And this is something I know, Tim, that you all deal with, and you see different elements across a family and across society in your line of work. And what are your thoughts on that about some of the major problems that we deal with in our society being caused by addiction?
If you talk to any law enforcement agency in any one of your cities or counties, they will tell you that 95 to 98% of the crime is directly connected with a drug or alcohol issue. When you go into our schools, most of our behavior dropout rates, things like that, are directly related to misuse and abuse of alcohol or drugs. CPS cases, the same thing. So we're seeing, not only, and we were just talking about Lilly's Place, we see the impact on these young children, but also the impact upon the families who, children who grow up in a family where alcohol or drug abuse is visible and readily seen, then that becomes acceptable. They, that's how you function. The terminology, if you feel bad, take a pill. And so part of what we're trying to do, and I will say this, bad kids come from good families, and good kids come from bad families. We've got to get away from categorizing people and say, well, if this is going on, it's over here because it's affecting all of us. And so we, in our prevention programs, are doing everything we can to bring coping mechanisms into our, to our kids. It was mentioned earlier about Celebrate Recovery. If you're hurting, you're looking for something to take away or numb that hurt. So if we can give kids coping mechanisms to deal with anything that they may be facing, rejection, the bullying, what happens if you get a bad grade on a test? The world doesn't end. You don't necessarily have to go take something to numb that feeling. And so those are the type of things that we want to instill in our children and our young people, is the fact that, you know, life's hard. Life's tough. You all know that. And we have to learn how to deal with those things and the fact that, and I tell them, I tell kids, God gave us 24 hours in a day because he knew we couldn't take 25. We, every day, we get it start over. And many of these kids have taken those skills and have now gone and shared them with their brothers and sisters, and even with their parents. And we have some kids that are being raised by their grandparents.
And one of the common themes, I had a chance to, to share stories of two recovering addicts over this past month. And two of the things that stuck out to me, one, they both started and they tried drugs for the first time at 11-years-old, and they tried marijuana. And the second was, they both said that they lived in a home with functioning alcoholics. So there are a lot of commonalities between that. Patrick?
There are, and we have parents, obviously, among us in the audience today. Catherine, you wanted to talk a little bit more about prevention, too, right?
Well, my question was, is do you think there are enough prevention programs and enough rehab programs in the area? Because what we were talking about in the break is that you guys are overworked, and there are waiting lists. There's one, there's, you know, you can go in and you'll have two-day stay for something, and then you leave, and then you have to wait again if you want to get back in to it. And you have to wait forever until there's a bed that opens up somewhere. So, you know, are, are we at capacity, I mean, are we overcapacity now? I mean, do we have too many people out there waiting for help, and they can't get the treatment they need? And it's nobody's fault. I mean, you're doing what you can, but what's the answer?
What's the answer?
Who would like to address that, Tim?
The first, biggest perception is that everybody has to have a bed. That's not the case. Prestera, we provide a lot of outpatient services. So the fact is that we may not, we have to have a bed, we have to have a bed. That's not the case. The other thing is, you can want it for your spouse, or your child, or your grandchild, but until they want it for themselves, we see that revolving door. They'll show up for two days, and then they'll walk out, and three months later, they want back in. One thing that we did, and I'm very proud, and it's also a national item that people are looking at, we've just worked with Pennsylvania, is we have 844 Help for WV. And we have folks that man that phone number 24/7, so that if someone's in Huntington and they call, we may not have a bed in Huntington, but there may be a bed in Charleston. Someone may call in Boone County, and we may not have one there, but we've got one in Mingo County. So they, they're that clearinghouse for all of those services to link that person up with what it is that's, that they need in that particular situation. And it doesn't mean that everybody has to have a bed.
I don't have one more question out there, Patrick?
I do, and this is very important. Kim, when we were talking about the neonatal units, Sarah was talking about the things that they're doing for, for mothers who are addicted and so on. That triggered something with you, didn't it?
Oh, absolutely. My sister and I here, she is an RN and has dealt with NAS for several years now, and we are in the process of opening a new neonatal center to deal with babies born with drug addiction, but to also, when the case arises, deal and withdraw mother and baby together. And our focus is really to go beyond just a medical treatment. It's a very holistic approach that treats, you know, the, the, all of the senses, aromatherapy, massage therapy, dealing spiritually with them, and, and bringing them to a place, the entire family, so that penetrates and it truly causes healing, just beyond medically getting a baby ready to leave and go back out into the world, but really experiencing a deep change and taking them through that, that effort, and loving them through that, giving them a purpose and a sense of hope.
And very quickly, where can they find that again?
Still Waters Neonatal Center. You can find us online and our website.
Kim, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
There is hope. There are lots of different treatment options out there. And now we want to talk to our panelists. Each of you kind of come from a different angle, and you see different types of addiction and how people are dealing with it and being treated. And JD, you have worked with a program for several years now in Charleston, Celebrate Recovery at River Ridge Church. Talk to me about the treatment there and, and your views on recovery and the success that you all are seeing.
Well, when I came into the program 11-years ago, I came in with no hope. I just had, I figured I've been this way my whole life, and I'm, I've tried, and I've tried to quit, and I can't. But when I came in, that's what I heard at the first Celebrate Recovery meeting I went to was, hey, there's hope. And I heard other people who had, had problems, and then they, now were getting better. And so that instilled with me a sense of hope. And they kept saying, keep coming back. It works if you work it. And we're finding great success from a spiritual aspect, because a lot of our problems come from a need of being wanted, of being loved, and we just don't have that. And so when we come in, and when you come into Celebrate Recovery as a newcomer, we welcome you, we celebrate you, we put our arms around you, we hug you. welcome you, we celebrate you, we put our arms around you, we hug you, and we let you know that now you are part of a forever family. And that makes a big difference. And so sometimes I hear, "Okay, I'm in rehab, I get off the drug, then what?" And we are the then, one of the then what answers because something, there was an emptiness or a hurt that made someone turn to drugs in the first place. Made me turn to something in the first place. And if that is not taken care of, then the chance of relapse is very, very strong. And so when somebody has a family they can belong to, they get away from their old friends who drag them down and have new friends who lift them up and then turn them over to a higher power who, there is more power than just by myself. By myself, when I'm by myself, I'm in bad company. But when I have friends and accountability, things like that, then I'm able to get better and better and better and better. I don't have to go back because the initial pain, the initial loneliness or depression is taken care of. Therefore, I don't need the drug because I don't have the pain. And that's the key to this. And it's changed my life, and there's 30,000 Celebrate Recovery meetings this week.
And where can people, if you're watching this outside of the Charleston area, how can you find a recovery meeting?
Just go to celebraterecovery.com and click on Group Finder, and you'll find one of those 30,000 meetings across the country. When I'm on vacation, I go to that and find a meeting that I can go to while I'm away.
That's a great idea. You can take it with you. What were some of the recurring themes as you interviewed people throughout the state? Where were you seeing the most hope, John?
Well, you know, I really think the hope is with children and stopping the problem before it starts. I founded a nonprofit called the Appalachian Arts Academy. And what we're trying to do is provide arts education, scholarships to kids in areas affected by the opioid crisis. We're starting our first set of classes at the North Charleston Community Center. And what we're going to start with is film and acting classes for kids and to try to get them involved and give them some inspiration, give them some hope. And, you know, it's for the budding artists, but it's also for, you know, kids that just want to have something to do, to have something to, you know, get some life skills, it gives them, you know, gets them off the streets. And that's what we're trying to do. And we're starting with film and acting, and we're expanding to music and dance and fashion and, you know, all kinds of different mediums, so.
Let us know when you have a class on broadcast. We'll be there for broadcast journalism for these kids.
We'll have you in to teach.
And this is also something, I know you are also trying to help parents, but also obviously help babies from a young victim, young age. So tell me about where you see the hope in the recovery and the treatment.
I see the hope in families that bring their babies back to visit us after they've gone home and they've been successful. So it can be done. It really can be done. It takes a lot of encouragement. It takes a lot of family support. It takes a lot of support from the community. And if I could say something to any mother out there who's pregnant and experiencing addiction, get help. And if you can't find help, you can call me and I will help you find help. And you can call me at Cabell Huntington Hospital because I want you to have a healthy pregnancy so you can have a healthy baby. And I don't want you to be afraid. Don't be afraid to get help. Your baby's health depends on it, and your family and your future depends on it.
I love that, "Don't be afraid to call." And from the emergency room standpoint, what is, what are your thoughts on our treatment options out there and the hope for these folks?
Well, to begin with, I think we need to remember that, like I said before, that each one of these people, no matter how they became addicted, whether it be a fault of their own or something that they just kind of happened in their life, they're still a person and they need treatment. We will be there in the emergency rooms 24/7 if it means giving them Narcan 15 times. And the 15th time, they wake up, see someone standing there, maybe the same nurse that's been in their room five times before, that can say, "We're here. We can get you connected with someone who can help you." That follows the mission of St. Mary's. It's very important to St. Mary's mission and to the Palatine Sisters that we treat everyone with dignity and we take care of them with dignity.
Brad?
There are several types of treatment, and people will argue what's, one's better than the other. Well, I tried that, didn't work. I tried this, didn't work, and now I'm here. There's different, different types of treatment at various levels of care based on the severity of somebody's opiate use disorder. And despite the differences, there's one thing that they all have in common is that a person has to implement core, I mean, I'm talking core changes to experience freedom from addiction, whether it's outpatient, medication-assisted treatment, residential, it doesn't matter. A person is going to have to make the same changes regardless of the level of care or the type of treatment.
And Tim?
I get up every morning and I say to myself, "Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people do recover." This right here is an example of that. If you could see his picture several years ago when he was in active addiction and then look at him now. I get to see every day fathers being reunited with their wives, children reunited with parents, people getting a job, getting that license. We have a gentleman right now that's got a full scholarship going back to Marshall that five years ago was out here on our streets in active addiction. We have to understand that recovery, treatment and recovery is out there, it's available. And as we said, there's no silver bullet, but there's silver buckshot. We have to look at it in every area. Part of my hope is you all taking the message back to your home, sitting down and talking to your children, not giving up. We talked earlier, we want to merge concern with hope. And I hope tonight, and as a result of this, we have a greater sense of hope for each other, for our communities, and certainly for our state.
We certainly hope that too. We want to echo that. And really quickly, Patrick, I know you have a quick question as well.
Tim, a quick question for you probably. There are a lot of people out there between a rock and a hard place. Addicted, they can't get a job because they can't pass a drug test, right? So they find themselves in a world of, you know, where do I go? What do you tell them tonight?
First of all, call the number, the 844 Help for WV. I'm very excited to tell you that West Virginia also passed the second chance legislation that allows someone who may have lost their license or have fines because of driving without insurance or license to get those things back and pay for those. The other thing is this, don't give up on hope. Don't give up on yourself. All of us on this, I think the other thing is, we're all working together. We're moved outside our silos. And that's the thing, from the hospital to connection with Prestera, from Prestera to recovery, from recovery then to Celebrate Recovery, having that opportunity to walk people through the process.
Don't be ashamed to ask for help. There are so many programs out there. There's always hope to get better. If someone like me can do it, and like I said, I've been using different drugs since I was 11, and I know I'm in a good spot.
We've talked about hope and what a great thing hope is, and we all know recovery's out there. Oftentimes, it's hard to get. Now, I'm coming from the streets. I speak from the streets. My question is, where is the awareness at the school level? Where is the awareness for our children collectively? It needs to start at the elementary level and work its way through. Many children are dying from this as well as the adults. Stigma plays a big part in death as well. We, as a community, need to release stigma. Now, we out on fighting the streets every day to help save another life. We don't have federal funding. We have funding from our pockets, what we can get. And the only thing that we have on the streets to help these people is hope. That's all we have. Where are we going to get our help?
Anybody from the panel?
Who would like to, who would like to address that? I think that's something we all have a very, have a very, you can't not agree with that.
That's right. And one of the things that we do is we have something called Celebration Place, and it's for children. We call it pre-covery. And for example, if the adults are doing a lesson on hope or powerlessness, the children are also doing a lesson on the same topic. And then they go home and they talk about it together. It's not like affecting a whole school at the same time, but we are making an impact with that. And parents are telling us that the children now want the parents to come back to recovery because they like the children's program so much. So that's one little thing that we're doing.
You're planting a seed there, hopefully. And would anyone else like to comment on that?
You know, we're implementing evidence-based program from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. It's great, it's age-appropriate, it's about a 10-week class. It's called Too Good for Drugs. We also have one on Keep a Clear Mind that focuses on tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, but it also focuses on resiliency skills. So we're partnering and we're doing that in the 10 counties that I have in those schools, starting at pre-K going all the way up to 12th grade.
Thank you all so much for being with us tonight. And we certainly hope that there's someone watching tonight that we can help in their hope and with their recovery. But what we also want you to know is we have compiled a major list of all the different places where you can go to get help, and it's waiting for you on our website. You can go to tristateupdate.com/addiction. We have Help for WV. All of the resources you might need are there waiting on you. Thank you again for joining us.